For April 2nd, 2024. Bienvenue à notre réunion de conseil pour le 2 avril. Nous ouvrons cette soirée en l'assimilant par le conseiller Pellerain.
Madam Maire, la mince patte de Népalasin West reconnaît avec nous que nous sommes réunis sur les terres ancestrales des peuples anistables, sur les territoires traditionnels des premières nations Népalasin, de Ma Gomé et Jauquès, désignés par le traité Revenance Europe. Nous honorons leurs liens historiques avec le territoire et nous valorisons leur contribution considérable au fassement et au renforcement de nos communautés. Ce faisant, nous affirmons, nous réaffirmons notre engagement et notre responsabilité envers la réconciliation et l'amélioration de notre compréhension des peuples autochtones locaux et de leur culture.
Merci. Ok, je prendrai toutes les déclarations de intérêt peculiar. Conseiller Revard?
Pour numéro 6.4.1, concernant les accommodations à la rente par an par lot, je vais déclarer d'intérêt commun.
Ok, merci. Comme vous l'avez fait dans les deux dernières réunions sur le même sujet, les papiers ont été envoyés par l'office du procureur et seront disponibles en ligne. Merci. Maintenant, à l'item numéro trois, nous n'avons pas d'addendum cette soirée, donc nous allons passer directement à l'adoption de l'agenda. Peut-on passer par le conseiller Chorchen et secondé par le conseiller Tissier? Que l'agenda de la réunion du Conseil, adopté le 2 avril 2024, soit résolu? Ok, tous ceux qui sont en faveur, prêts? Merci. Ok, et numéro quatre, nous avons quelques items sous nos delegations et petitions cette soirée. Tout d'abord, je voudrais bienvenue monsieur Greg Damaris et monsieur Joe, j'ai dû regarder le nom, désolée.
Ça va.
Greg et Joe vont venir au podium et ils présenteront à Water Palooza et le Strajen River, un événement prévu pour l'été.
Merci. Madam Maire, honneur du conseiller, et ça. Nous sommes juste ici pour vous informer de ce que nous faisons. Je veux juste revenir à environ sept ans plus tard, quand j'étais sur le comité de développement économique. Nous avons brisé nos yeux en essayant de comprendre ce que nous pouvions faire sur la rivière, parce que c'est notre principal asset ici à ce moment. Et nous avons regardé Volkswagen, si je ne me trompe pas, mettant ça sur l'ice, faisant des tickets. Nous avons regardé la musique. J'ai approché Starlight, j'ai seulement quelques jours pour essayer de le faire, mais ça n'a jamais abouti à la fruition. Et l'été dernier, mon père, père Joe, est venu et a dit : "Hé, pourquoi ne faisons pas de musique sur la rivière?" Donc, ce que nous avons fait, c'est nous avoir organisé un événement. C'est un événement très rapide et sale, cinq heures de musique sur la rivière. Il n'y a pas d'accès local, sauf si vous connaissez les voisins à travers la rivière qui ont aussi nous donné la permission et qui attendent cela. Et nous allons mettre de l'argent dans les camps de soins des enfants. Donc, c'est l'affaire KOA. Ce n'est pas un événement KOA. C'est un événement Joe, Greg et Ivan. Vous verrez nos bios sur les canaux que nous avons donné. Et nous sommes en train de mettre de l'argent dans les camps de soins des enfants KOA. Joe et Ivan viennent chaque année à nos camps et jouent au moins quatre à cinq fois, gratuitement pour mettre de l'argent dans les camps de soins des enfants. Maintenant, ça va juste être augmenté. Donc, nous allons avoir une passe de cinq heures et je vais faire venir Joe pour vous dire ce que vous devez attendre et l'expérience que vous devriez avoir. Joe? Bonjour, madame maire, conseiller de la ville. Joe, mon nom est Joe Wellma. Et je suis le fondateur et président de cet événement qui se déroule. Greg vous l'a mentionné, je suis assis l'année dernière avec lui. Je me suis réveillé un matin, assis, je vis sur le Strajen River moi-même. Je me suis réveillé un matin, j'avais mon café sur la baignoire après avoir fait un show à KOA le jour précédent. Et je suis assis là, regardant à travers la rivière, et j'ai juste eu une épidémie. J'ai vu tous ces boats assis sur la frontière et jouant de la musique de la même façon. En tant que boat, je connais Greg depuis plus de 20 ans, nous avons boité ensemble pendant tous ces années. Et l'un des plus grands commentaires que je vois de beaucoup des amis de boat et tout ça, c'est qu'il n'y a rien pour la communauté boating. Et j'ai pensé, quel grand moyen pour amener la communauté boating à cette grande rivière sur laquelle nous sommes, plus la communauté où je vis, Strajen Falls, West Népalasin. Ils disent, amène les deux ensemble et transforme ça en événement annuel. Cette année, ça va être une preuve de concept, donc nous avons appris des leçons et nous allons avoir plus d'appris comme nous le faisons. Mais maintenant, cette chose est passée par la fenêtre. Nous avons, nous avons eu une outreach sur les médias sociaux, près de 30 000 personnes ont contacté nous et nous ont vu. Nous avons plus de 3 000 personnes qui ont exprimé un intérêt en assistant à cet événement et près de 300 personnes qui ont dit définitivement qu'ils allaient assister à l'événement. Ça a été dépassé par la fenêtre. Et c'est mon intention, je suis un retraité militaire, vétéran, j'ai parcouru ce monde. J'ai fait des choses dans d'autres pays et j'ai aidé les pays du troisième monde à restaurer toute leur infrastructure et tout ça. Et il n'y a pas de payback meilleur que je peux imaginer maintenant, vivre dans cette communauté que j'ai vécue depuis 18 ans et donner de l'argent à cette communauté maintenant pour un changement. Et à partir de là, si vous avez des questions, je serai plus que le seul à vous répondre.
Ok, merci beaucoup, monsieur Wellma, monsieur Damaris, c'est vraiment bien de vous avoir ici. J'ai vu les posts sur les médias sociaux et en fait, j'ai parlé à la nouvelle propriétaire de KOA. Greg, ça sonne comme un événement très excitant. Et je ouvre le plan pour des questions ou des commentaires de nos membres du Conseil.
Je veux juste souligner aussi, nous essayons de soutenir la communauté et nous avons en fait donné des twigues. Nous allons les promouvoir pour le soir, pour que les gens puissent aller là-bas. Et je pense qu'ils vont vous approcher pour apporter de la musique aussi pour la soirée et prendre parti dans le parking, juste un petit plug pour eux, pour s'assurer que vous êtes conscient qu'ils veulent le faire.
Oui, il sera intéressant de voir comment l'événement évolue en passant par les étapes de planning.
Ils vont dire, je regarde la vie générale de tout le monde ici. Vous aimerez la musique que nous jouons. Ça va venir d'une combinaison de générations, en arrière, depuis, je pense que les bandes que nous amenons et les listes de chantiers qu'ils vont jouer vont satisfaitre tout le monde de l'âge commencé aux 20 ans jusqu'à 80 ans. Votre âge? Proche.
Ok, des questions ou des commentaires du Conseil?
Merci beaucoup.
Attendez une seconde, il y a une question. Conseiller Tissier?
Merci, madame maire. Je veux dire que je l'ai raté, mais avez-vous une date pour cet événement ou c'est juste?
Oui, c'est going to be the long weekend of August 3rd, le samedi. Et puis, à travers notre publicité aussi, nous avons un jour de pluie alternatif, qui sera le 4ème sur ce dimanche. Encore une fois, il y a une chose que nous ne pouvons pas contrôler. Vous avez dit que vous pourriez, mais nous essayons de contrôler le temps. Donc, espérons nous obtenir un week-end vraiment agréable sur ce dimanche ou ce samedi.
Merci, d'autres questions ou des commentaires de nos conseillers?
À vous.
Conseiller Revard, désolé.
Je voulais juste savoir, je sais que c'est mentionné sur les résidences privées qui auraient accès. Donc, s'il y a quelqu'un qui n'a pas de boat ou qui ne connaît pas les gens sur ces lots privés, est-ce qu'il y a un moyen pour eux d'en profiter? Ou à ce jour?
Nous pourrions regarder la streaming, mais face à face, non, c'est un événement de boat. Quand nous sommes arrivés et avons décidé d'organiser cet événement, nous ne pouvions pas prévoir si il y aurait 10 boat ou, dans ce cas, où ça a atteint maintenant. Et donc, le focus original était vers la communauté boating. Et nous recevons beaucoup de retours de gens qui veulent avoir cette capacité de lock-up. Et en bas, encore une fois, c'est une leçon apprise pour l'événement de l'année prochaine, c'est que nous verrons probablement un endroit différent où nous pouvons y accompagner. Jeez, vous savez ce parc que vous avez à côté, sur la rivière?
Peter?
Maître.
Conseiller Tissier?
Merci. Juste une autre question, donc vos artistes, sont-ils allés jouer sur le boat ou sur la plage?
Ils seront sur la plage, ils seront en fait sur mon, sur mon propriété et tout ça. Ça est littéralement une scène construite naturelle, donc nous aurons une belle elevation pour que tout le monde sur la rivière puisse nous regarder, pour que il n'y ait pas un masque ou un effet de couverture ou quelque chose comme ça.
Merci.
D'autres? Ok, à behalf of the council and the residents of West Népalasin, merci d'être ici aujourd'hui pour partager les informations sur l'événement. Je sais que je m'attends à ça et je vais entendre plus sur ça avec le temps. Et je vous souhaite le mieux de la chance, c'est un excellent endeavor.
On invite individuellement et tous les conseils seront invités individuellement et tout ça, mais nous ne sommes juste pas là administrativement encore.
Pas de problème.
All right.
Merci beaucoup pour votre temps. Ok, merci beaucoup. Pour point deux, nous avons une petition concernant une arrêt de quatre voies à la corner de Principale et de la 6e route. Il y a l'information reçue par le conseiller Pellerain. Ça sera reçu et il sera mis sur la discussion à notre prochaine réunion. Ok, merci. Et puis, la deuxième petition que nous avons reçue, elle est concernant un arrêt à la rente à court terme. Il y a plusieurs pages qui ont été incluses dans l'agenda initiale. L'agenda initial, puis nous avons reçu des signatures supplémentaires depuis lors. Maintenant, comme d'habitude, nous discuterons de ça à la prochaine réunion. Je proposerais, puisque cet item se présente plus tard dans la réunion cette soirée, si le Conseil voudrait avoir plus de discussion en ce qui concerne le contenu de la petition, que nous l'assurons jusqu'à ce que l'item apparaisse sur l'agenda. Merci. Ok, nous allons passer à l'item numéro cinq, 5.1, qui est notre comité gouvernemental général. Et l'item premier dans cette section est la révision du manuel politique. Il y a un memo dans votre paquet de travail de notre équipe de travail en ce qui concerne le travail qui a été effectué jusqu'à présent. Monsieur Barbeau, vous voudriez parler de ça?
Je vais juste dire quelques mots. Notre procureur, monsieur Charme, a pris en compte le travail. Une question m'a été posée plus tôt par la maire, et je m'excuse, mais nous allons recevoir le manuel politique existant. Le manuel politique existant a beaucoup de lois ou de politiques qui ont été implémentées juste pour commencer la municipalité. Ils ont évolué, certains d'entre eux ont été supprimés par d'autres politiques et ainsi de suite. Donc, Melanie ou monsieur Charme a pris le lead sur la nettoyage. Donc, ce que vous avez devant vous est le premier essai de monsieur Charme, premier tour de la nettoyage. Avec votre indulgence, madame maire, nous passons à monsieur Charme pour la collaboration.
Merci, madame président. Pas grand chose à dire en plus de ce que monsieur Barbe a indiqué. J'ai passé par le manuel politique et comme il l'a dit, il y a des politiques datant de 25 ans. Lesquels sont identifiés dans votre rapport ont été identifiés comme étant nécessaires à la révision et à l'actu. Et ils seront à l'arrivée dans le temps. Deux réunions dans les mois suivants. Comme indiqué, il y a quelques-uns qui sont complètement, ils ne doivent pas exister parce qu'ils ont été supprimés par d'autres législations et politiques supplémentaires. Ils seront retirés du manuel et espérons qu'à la fin de l'année, nous aurons un manuel qui est nettoyé. En attendant, espérons de pouvoir vous, donner des copier-là. Mais en comprenant qu'il y a cette liste qui doit être consultée.
Ok, et ce sera une version électronique ou ce sera comme une copie dure? Qui sera fournie au Conseil?
Comme le souhaite le Conseil.
Est-ce que, je sais que conseiller Pellerain, vous aimeriez préférer une copie dure? Ok, est-ce que quelqu'un d'autre préfère une copie dure plutôt que une copie électronique du manuel politique? Une copie dure aussi pour le conseiller Revard? Je voudrais aussi avoir une copie dure pour Principale. Et est-ce que tout le monde est d'accord avec l'électronique? Je vais juste poser quelques questions pour que ça fonctionne. Melanie dit qu'il y a des politiques qui ont été supprimées par d'autres législations, comme la stratégie d'expédition d'urgence, qui a été supprimée par la législation du gouvernement provincial sur les groupes de gestion d'urgence. C'est ce genre de choses.
Oui, et il y avait à une époque une politique sur la façon dont les couvertures sont installées. Et nous savons que c'est couvert par notre loi d'entrée privée. Juste ce genre de choses. Donc, ils ont été cross-referencés contre les législations, les lois supplémentaires pour s'assurer qu'il y ait quelque chose qui les supprime.
Et je would expect que dans le travail, je sais que c'est un lot de travail parce qu'il y a beaucoup de papier qui a été généré pendant ces 25 ans. Il peut y avoir d'autres additions que vous identifiez lorsque vous commencez à travailler dans ce processus. Donc, c'est une liste initiale, mais il peut y avoir d'autres politiques que lorsque vous travaillez, vous pensez : "Oh oui, bien, celui-ci correspond à celui-là."
Et ces uns ici sont juste ceux que nous avons identifiés comme nécessaires à l'actu.
Ok.
Ce sont des politiques que nous intendons garder, mais qui ont besoin d'être mises à jour.
Oui. Ce ne sont pas lesquelles à retirer tout en même temps. Et pour révoyer une politique, ceux qui viennent au Conseil? Donc, c'est la vieille politique, nous voulons la révoyer parce que c'est tout en papier, oui. C'est un processus qui est approuvé par le Conseil?
Si le Conseil souhaite, et je pourrais l'apporter comme une résolution omnibus?
Parmi vous, madame maire, peu importe si c'est une résolution omnibus, si une politique était approuvée au Conseil, alors elle est reçue par le Conseil. Ça aide?
Oui, au mieux, merci. Je ferai ouvrir le plan pour d'autres questions ou des commentaires sur cette révision. Désolée, je vais aussi dire merci à madame clerk pour le travail mis en place parce que je sais que c'est un grand dossier de papiers et c'est un lot de travail, nous le remercions. Donc, je prendrai des questions ou des commentaires de mes autres membres du Conseil. Conseiller Tissier?
Merci, madame maire. Y a-t-il une politique ou une direction en place pour qui est responsable d'actuar le manuel politique? Et dans le cadre spécifique? Donc, s'il n'y en a pas, peut-être que nous pouvons mettre une en place juste pour s'assurer que les politiques sont gardées et restent à jour pour le futur?
À vous, c'est une excellente suggestion. Nous ne, vous savez, ça a été un peu rondé, conseiller Tissier. Et je pense que nous voudrions les faire comme ils sont amendés, pour que ça ne soit pas tout confus. Donc, le adjointe clerk, entre, nous n'en avons pas un maintenant, mais en général, chaque fois que nous avons une nouvelle politique et une résolution qui supprime, alors le adjointe clerk serait actuellement en train d'actuar le manuel, électroniquement ou en écrit. Et donc, à un degré juste, ça a été fait. Mais néanmoins, il y avait toujours ces stratégies avant tout le monde, sauf moi.
Un bon point, merci beaucoup, conseiller Tissier. D'autres questions ou des commentaires sur ça? Donc, en ce qui concerne l'action ou la correction du Conseil, vous n'avez pas besoin de rien à ce moment. Vous aurez les politiques en revue lorsque vous les aurez prêtes avec les amendements.
Exact.
Avec ça, nous ferons fermer cet item sur l'agenda. Ensuite, nous avons 5.1.2, qui est notre politique de demande de assistance financière. Encore une fois, il y a un memo dans votre paquet. Et je passerai le plan à monsieur Barbeau.
Merci, votre chef. Le, comme vous, vous savez, comme vous pouvez voir, une politique draft est fournie pour discussion. Je ne sais pas s'il y a des commentaires ou des questions que l'équipe pourrait répondre en ce qui concerne ce qui est inclus.
Alisa? Désolée, madame Kratic, avez-vous d'autres?
Je ne savais pas si vous passiez ça à l'équipe ou non, Jake? C'est tout. Oui.
Excuse-moi?
Je ne savais pas si vous passiez ça à l'équipe ou...
Well, I mean, if you want to provide an overview, that's, that's fine. I just know that we have a lot to deal with and if there are specific questions from the Council. But if you want to provide a general overview of what we sell, these staff communications that put it together.
Oui, nous avions originally parlé, vous savez, internement à propos de séparer les demandes de rejet de la wade de frais de la demande de soutien financier. Nous les avons rassemblées sur ce draft ici. En fait, c'est juste un regard, vous savez, vous pouvez voir les considérations qui ont été mises avant, que le Conseil doit en quelque sorte fournir une direction à nous pour finaliser une politique. Vous savez, si le Conseil voudrait avoir, vous savez, une quantité maximale par projet qui sort, si des dons sont demandés et reçus tout au long de l'année ou une fois pendant l'année. La préavance de le faire une fois pendant l'année signifie que vous pouvez regarder tous les projets et mesurer tous les projets contre les autres. Ça signifie que ça peut peut-être pas toujours correspondre avec le timing pour d'autres projets qui viennent et qui veulent un retour rapide. Nous avons mis une inclusion là-dessus, vous savez, en regardant les statements financières ou les budgets opposés. Dependant du seuil de financement que leur, proposant, ils pourraient chercher. Donc, vous savez, vous pourriez pas vouloir ça s'ils viennent juste en looking for une, vous savez, une donation de $250 à quelque chose, mais absolument, vous allez voir s'ils viennent en looking for une donation de $10 000 et des choses comme ça. Donc, il y a juste quelques considérations pour le Conseil de regarder si le Conseil avait des, vous savez, des pensées sur ce qu'ils voulaient ou où ils voulaient les choses aller. Et puis, nous pourrions formuler ça de là. Oui, c'était juste en quelque sorte chercher un peu de feedback du Conseil sur ces questions.
Ok, merci beaucoup.
Monsieur Greg, désolé.
Désolée. Questions ou des commentaires des membres du Conseil? Conseiller Tissier?
Merci, madame maire. À vous. Donc, cette politique est pour nous aider quand les gens demandent des rejets de wade de frais comme nous allons en parler plus tard, le soutien financier pour les organisations locales. Donc, nous avons un total là-bas, mais je veux dire, est-ce quelque chose à discuter plus tard? Les totals sont ici que vous demandez, est-ce quelque chose que vous voulez aujourd'hui ou une discussion future?
Désolée, je crois que l'item qui est plus tard dans l'agenda avec le rapport des rejets de wade est un rapport de 2023.
Oui.
Donc, ce n'est pas la demande de cette année, c'est juste un rapport sur ce que la municipalité a rejeté ou donné ou donné en quelque sorte à des organisations pour 2023. Donc, nous ne discutons pas les fonds spécifiques qui sont montrés ici. C'est pour établir une politique sur la façon dont nous recevons ces fonds et comment ils sont traités au Conseil. Donc, je pense que l'une des questions importantes est de savoir si nous voulons être en train de les recevoir tout au long de l'année, traiter ces fonds sur une base adhoc ou si nous voulons les regarder comme une date de financement préalable. Donc, disons, je vais vous donner des dates, le 1er septembre, pour que l'équipe ait le temps de préparer un rapport et nous pouvons voir les demandes que nous avons et comment elles correspondent à notre processus de financement. Et il y a un bénéfice à ça, mais je pense aussi que lorsque vous regardez l'autre side de ça, c'est que lorsque les groupes de communauté ou les organisations, disons, sont capables d'accéder à des fonds extérieurs par, accéder à des fonds extérieurs par un programme de dons, ils peuvent avoir une besoin plus immédiate, vous savez, pour une décision au Conseil. S'ils viennent au Conseil en disant : "Bien, nous avons 10 000, nous pouvons obtenir de Trillium. Le Conseil peut venir et la municipalité peut venir et soutenir à 2 500?" Et donc, la timeline peut ne pas correspondre pour les groupes si c'est ce type de situation. Donc, je pense que ce sont les types de choses que nous voulons considérer quand développer une politique comme celle-ci, c'est comment le Conseil peut le mieux servir aux résidents et aux différents groupes dans la municipalité qui peuvent nous aider à faire des choses.
Merci.
Je veux dire, nous avons la politique en ce moment. Donc, si le Conseil a des pensées, des suggestions sur n'importe quel parc, je pense que la maire a résumé que, et le least a résumé très bien, les aspects d'une politique pourraient être. S'il y a quelque chose que vous n'aimez pas à ces aspects, maintenant est le temps. Et s'il y a certains seuils que vous pensez... Mon question, d'un point de vue d'accounting, serait plus like back to Miss Kratic, à quel seuil pensez-vous que vous voudriez voir des statements, vous savez? À quel point est-ce de devenir, est-ce une décision politique? Ou est-ce quelque chose que nous voudrions fournir des conseils au Conseil d'un point de vue d'audit et de contrôle?
Vous demandez à la conterre?
Je me suis rendu compte que je n'ai pas.
Oui, et je dirais que, encore une fois, certainement, ça pourrait être lié à, vous savez, si le Conseil est assis à, vous savez, nous allons, vous savez, capter un seuil sur combien vous allez autoriser pour ce financement discretionary pour l'année entière et des choses comme ça. Et puis, en regardant le support que nous faisons, vous savez, mon premier avis est que le 5 000 est en quelque sorte autour du mark que vous voulez regarder pour obtenir plus de documentation sur, sur le soutien juste pour que ça ne devienne trop onoreux sur, vous savez, quelqu'un qui vient juste en looking for un, vous savez, ou en quelque sorte contributions ou des choses comme ça. Mais certainement que ça protège le contributeur du, vous savez, ces donations substantielles qui sont faites à des groupes ou le soutien substantiel qui est fait à des groupes.
Ok, y a-t-il des pensées d'autre sur le seuil? Conseiller Bonnier?
Pas nécessairement le seuil, mais une contribution des organisateurs ou des groupes eux-mêmes. Peut-être une sponsorship de $2 par un contributeur serait peut-être une bonne. Il y a déjà d'autres procédures. Ou n'importe quel document dans l'autre municipalité qui a ça, mais je pense que c'est prudent de faire des gens aussi payer leur chemin si le contributeur est en train d'aller à la même heure. C'est mon commentaire.
Merci. Conseiller Chorchen?
À vous, madame maire. Je suis d'accord avec le seuil pour le 5 000. Je suggère que nous, juste sur la loi, quelques commentaires. Le 1er juin, le 1er octobre, mais laissez un clause, que vous savez, si le temps est oblique, disons pour une application de dons ou quoi que ce soit, et que les gens ont besoin de la priorité de la politique, que je pense que ça devrait être amené au Conseil parce qu'ils arrivent toujours, ces types de choses. Donc, c'est mon suggestion. Un maximum de $25 000 par an. Encore une fois, ça peut être élevé, mais encore une fois, ça peut être, ça sera révisé.
Désolée, je suis désolée, quel était le maximum?
Donc, il y avait une section, comme une quantité maximale de contribution, disons par an. Je suggère 25 000. Et c'est vrai, vous savez, travailler avec des donateurs et des agences dans le passé aussi. Vous savez, j'ai vu le bien et le mal, le milieu et tout ça. Donc, certaines choses fonctionnent mieux, certaines choses fonctionnent, vous savez, moins, moins bien. Avec ça, vous savez, pas nécessairement capter à 25 000. Je vais juste ajouter, vous savez, un clause qui dit que le maximum peut être augmenté en fonction du mérite du projet individuel et des circonstances spéciales. So again, it allows council to kind of, you know, if there is certain, you know, big project and, you know, funding is imminent or whatnot, at least it would kind of be, you wouldn't be, you know, hands tied that way. And the other things, so I know, like, because it is taxpayers' money, typically when there are discretionary grants or any type of funding, there is what we call in French la réduction de compte. So there's reports that need to be provided to ensure that the funds are used for their intended purposes. Would it be possible to build in, let's say, like a final report requirement outlining, you know, have, you know, the metrics been met within the initial application? And what I would say is, let's say, like a thousand or less, 100%, and then final report at the end. And then the balance, let's say, for anything over, well, 50% initially and then 50% with the final report. That would ensure, you know, a certain control of funds without necessarily being too onerous on staff duty. And I know there's a lot of paperwork when it comes to those types of applications. So that would just be a suggestion. And maybe, you know, from what I've seen too is, let's say the final report isn't provided within 30 or 60 days. Well, there's a clawback provision that, you know, if the report isn't provided within a specific timeline, that the municipality can recoup all the funds. So there's a transparent way, there's an accountable way, you know, because those are taxpayers' dollars too. And then would allow for an exchange of information and being able to measure the impacts, I guess, of the project. So that's just my take on that. For the application form, I only had a couple comments. So some organizations have dual status. So they're both nonprofit and a registered charity. So I would just add that option maybe underneath, you know, that option. Because a whole lot of organizations also have the dual status. And the last thing would be just add a declaration within the application. So typically, if someone applies, let's say on behalf of a board or a group, they typically have the authority to do so. So, you know, just a declaration outlining, you know, I have the authority to submit it on, you know, so-and-so's name, and I declare information to be true. I would just, those are just my comments. It's based on, you know, past experience, but it's just my comments on that.
Thank you very much. Very well thought out comments, Counselor Koshin. Just on the charitable, we had discussed in the past the differences between the charitable organizations. So that probably would be ended not for profit. So that probably would be a good addition to the application form.
Thank you.
I felt somebody was applying for funds before. Thanks a lot. One of the only things I would suggest is the small threshold on disbursement. Could be a little onerous if the grant is for like 800 bucks or 900 bucks or something like that. So perhaps if we have that $5,000 threshold is when controls kick in or whatever. Let's the treasurer provide advice. The concept, I totally agree with. It's just the minimum threshold might be a little onerous. We'll give you 12 cents right now and then the extra dollar and a half in two months. You know what I mean? So there's got to be a certain level. But everything else, thanks so much.
Other questions, comments? Okay, so is, I'll just take a poll with the things that we've just discussed. $5,000 threshold for financial statements and then for reporting as well. The user group contributions that... How would you phrase that? Would you do that as it's mandatory or it'll be more favorable? Or, like, I'm just trying to give staff direction so that when they come back with a policy, we're close to where we want to be on it. I can, Counselor, Madam Craddock?
So taking Counselor Gagne's thought there about having sort of a two-for-one and stuff like that, I'm just going to go steal some language and, I don't know, bring something that kind of captures that thought back in the policy then and see whether it is, you know, whether we have a, you know, a hard two-for-one or whether it is more that little bit of and with merit, can do whatever, whatever kind of stuff. But, yeah.
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 Like, these will be looked upon more favorably.
Yeah.
It doesn't always apply. So when we look at, like, we're not necessarily talking about fee waivers at the, but when you're looking at cash infusions or cash asks from the municipality.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Yep, perfect.
Okay. A clause to, like, to have an application period, but with a clause that would allow the individual applications to come to council if the timing requires a more immediate decision. Yes, everybody's okay with that one? Maximum per calendar year, $25,000. Yes? And just the adding a charitable organization to the application. So does that summarize the comments clearly? Did I miss anything? Okay, Counselor Resto?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Is contributions from the organization, is it cash or is it in kind or?
What's thinking cash? Is there a project? So that's what I was thinking.
Anything, I don't know. Do you think we should expand that?
No, I think that's okay. I think it's probably actually a little bit more.
It's easier to value.
Yeah, and it's a little bit more commitment from the organization. It's that.
Okay. And so, Ms. Craddock, you feel with that discussion with the council, you have enough to go back and drop the policy for us to review?
Yeah.
Any other final comments or questions on this before we close this topic for this evening? Okay, thank you very much. 5.1.3, we have policy and fee updates for burial permits. I will ask Mr. Barbeau to mathacit to Madam clerk.
Reading my mind, Your Worship.
Madam clerk, if you'd like to get us that, I'd be able to, if there is a memo in your packages?
Yes, sweetie, Madam Mayor, thank you. This had come earlier in the year. And I'll see that I forgot to change the date on my memo, so we know exactly when it came. This policy is being brought forward in order to, A, raise the fees for requesting a fee raised for the issuance of burial permits, and also to standardize the process by which we obtain original documents from the funeral homes that we serve. We've had some difficulty, particularly throughout COVID, with visiting doctors and people being pronounced, I guess, over the phone, that we had a lot of difficulty obtaining original documents. And we'd like to set in place a policy which will ensure that we get the documents that we need in a timely manner to submit to the registrar's office. So that's basically what the crux of the policy is about.
Okay. I assume everybody's had a chance to read the memo and the attached policy. Do we have questions or comments on that? Counselor Rebar?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Haven't we already approved a fee increase?
No, we hadn't approved a fee increase for cemeteries for burials.
Okay, this is strictly the burial.
This is for the permits to bury them.
Yeah, so my comment on that would just be, I don't like the idea of asking for more money when people are going through such a hard time with that. But I do understand maybe the need where we need to at least recoup the money required.
This is actually paid by the funeral.
By the funeral, which probably.
I'm sure they added to the.
Probably down cost onto the, onto the family as well. Those are just my comments. What's the fee increase proposal? Is this the final fee at the bottom of the memo?
Yes, that is the, this is the proposed fees.
Okay, what are the current fees?
25, $25.
Each?
Yes. Period, right across the board.
And when was the last time the fees were updated?
I think that's in the mid, I think it was 2014 or 15-ish. 2018. And I think it went from 20 to 25.
And what is the, I'm sorry, I should have asked this question in advance so you'd have the answer. Approximately, what is the percentage of each? That would like, if you're taking 100%, what's, is it 75%?
65, 35.
65, 35? Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. If there's anything you would want to see changed in this policy as it's been presented for a review, now would be the time. This policy would come back at the next meeting for formal approval. So if there is any appetite to recommend a smaller fee increase, now would be the time to do it. Given that, I will, I counsel as generally in favor of the updates to the policy. Yes? So you'll bring the policy back for formal approval at our next meeting? Thank you very much. Okay, 5.1.4, we have municipal land sales updates.
Through you, Madam Mayor. This is just as per request. I think we were requested to get an update of what was sold from last year and this year and what's been transferred over to reserve, I believe. I would have Ms. Craddock speak on the first, but first, I think it probably happened pre the discussion of transferring. And some of the differences in price would also be to recoup some of our operating costs in the sale. But, Ms. Craddock, did I miss anything?
Nope, that's it.
Yeah. So this is just for information. So from a go-forward basis, when we're selling an asset to the municipality, it's not going to fund our operations because, as I indicated, that's, you know, for your credit card with your mortgage, it's going back into capital so that we can invest, you know, in refurbishing what we have, what council wishes to keep.
Okay. Will a report like this be available for us? And, you know, like, at, say, a budget time to see, you know, what we've sold during the year and any given year? Try to see that in advance?
Certainly.
And so for the 2023, the three first items plus 20,000-ish? Is the 20,000 that wasn't included in the transfer from the Cash Bay Trailer Park is that some of the costs associated with the sale? So there was some marketing and some advertising done and?
Yeah, there's some marketing, some advertising. And then also for things like the Cash Bay Trailer Park or property that has a land value to it already on our books, then that gets deducted from the proceeds as well. So then it's just left. So there was, I mean, it was a huge chunk of property. We sold just a small portion of it with the Cash Bay Trailer Park. But there was a little bit of land value that was also removed from that.
Questions or comments on this item? Just a report provided for information. Okay, thank you very much, as staff providing that, we'll move on. 5.1.5, a proposed naming of municipal asset for the living playground. With Mr. Barbeau's permission, I'll actually pass it to Counselor Koshin.
Absolutely.
So this was an agenda request from Counselor Koshin. So I'll pass the floor to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Donc le centre communautaire de la vigne puis le centre social et culturel de la vigne avait soumis une demande conjointement à l'épicerie pour nommer le nouveau parc à la vigne, parc la visitation. Donc le parc juste pour se situer sur le chemin corromp, sur le même terrain que la patinoire municipale, patinoire extérieure. C'est en fait situé sur la moitié est de l'ancien site de l'école de la visitation. Donc le nom avait été soumis de bonne foi pour souligner l'importance que l'école avait eu pour la communauté de la vigne et pour les générations d'élèves qui l'avaient fréquentée. Je peux dire une petite anecdote aussi, ce parc-là, c'est pas d'hier parce que malgré que l'école avait été fermée en juin 2002, pas longtemps après, puis on parle de mois, une couple d'années après, le centre communautaire puis les bénévoles avaient déjà commencé les plans pour développer un parc. Ça avait été entendu dans le temps que le conseil scolaire était pour laisser une certaine section au parc et puis ça, ça avait tombé à l'eau pour une petite raison. Donc, pensez qu'à l'admettre que 24 ans après la fermeture puis la mobilisation de la communauté, le parc est presque prêt, il y aura juste un ceremony, une clôture à finir, un pavillon à construire en prochain mois puis l'ajout d'une bissale. Donc, c'est vraiment plus pour faire suivre avec la demande qui avait été présentée pour nommer le parc, parc la visitation. Si jamais vous avez besoin de plus de détails, il serait que je peux en parler plus long.
I'll see. Counselor Nichol, did you want a brief translation of that? You're good? Okay. Excellent, so the proposal is here and we're looking for council approval. Did staff have any recommendation on that, Ms. Nichol?
There's nothing in our existing policy that would preclude council from making that decision. So if council wishes to honor their request of the CCL, and if that's what the committee wants, then council's at liberty to do so and is not in violation of any bylaw or policy.
Counselor Cassie?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Est-ce que le parc est situé sur une propriété de la municipalité? Oui.
Okay. Les autres, Tessia? Phil, Carrie, Resto?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. I'm just looking at the bylaw and I think it fits within, the request fits within. And it talks about, you know, historical significance, the location in Lavinge with the former school. I think it's good.
Ms. Nichol, anybody else? Questions or comments? Yeah, I know that Counselor Koshin has worked closely with the CCL and the centre social et cultural and the community. They're a very important partner in Lavinge. And for me, for that group to bring forward a recommendation for the name, I support them because I believe that they are representative of the community there. I'm happy to see that. And it's going to be exciting to see the park open. So with that, a resolution? Does a resolution come for our next meeting?
Wait.
Okay, so a resolution. Oh, sorry.
There is a bit of an application and notification process that has to go through based on the law.
Have you submitted the application, Counselor?
I didn't submit. Well, you know, assuming the application has been submitted.
I was going to assume this was the application.
Yes, so then the next section that I was ignoring is what?
There has to be no public notification.
There has to be public notification. What's the period of notification? So if we can provide that notification, Counselor Koshin, in short order, we'll do it and expedite things and hopefully we'll have the resolution at next meeting. If we have to delay, it'll be the first meeting of May.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much. Moving on. 5.1.6, rapport sur les exonérations. How come there's one item in French and my English? Et de vance et le don. Somebody better help me with that. Rapport sur les exonérations de raid avance et le don. So that's the report on the, financial report on the... I know, but is it in French on yours too?
It's facility fee waivers.
I have no idea why it's in French. It's English.
Okay, anyway. Moving on. Okay. Okay, so there's a memo in your packages in regards to 2023 dispersments, sorry, direct financial contributions or waivers for different organizations. This is information provided for council's information. Did you have anything to add on that, Mr. Barbeau?
No, I have no comment.
Okay. Questions or comments? Uh, questions or comments on the, uh, on the report or the memo? Counselor Restul?
Just so it's not so quiet. I, I just think I appreciate through you, Madam Mayor, uh, seeing that because it gives us a little bit of context of what's been approved in the past and for moving into developing this, uh, policy or, or document that we can see numbers and, uh, when we have those blank number signs on the previous document, it's helpful, so I just want to say thanks for putting that together so we can get a good sense of what's been approved in the past.
I just have a, a couple of questions on the way, um, the report is structured, may I, uh, address? Craddock, direct, you'll copy?
Well, it depends on the question, it certainly goes.
So, well, I was gonna start with the, um, the last item on the list is the North Monetteville Community Center, and I appreciate seeing, um, kind of what the municipality puts into keeping that, um, functional, but that is actually a municipally-owned asset. So, um, like, it's being included as financial support for an outside organization, but it's a municipally-owned asset.
I agree, it is one that's a little bit, a little bit odd, so it is this, um, it is municipal asset. Um, however, the municipality does not, um, retain any of the revenue or any of the activities or anything that happens at the, that hall. It is run by that, that group, which is why I, I did include it in this list, but it is a little bit, um, different that way because it is, you know, it is still our building. We would still have our building there if they weren't there. The difference is that they are running events and renting it and, and third-partying stuff, and we don't see any of that revenue, it's entirely within their purview.
Okay, so is the, the, the twenty-nine thousand that's shown on the report, is that the operating cost of, of the building? Or is that the value of the revenues that, that the organization is generating and retaining to support itself?
Is the operating cost of that facility, I, I am not aware of what level of revenue they're?
They don't report to us as far as, uh, what their, uh, their revenues are. Okay. Uh, and the, the centre communautaire de la vie is a different model, so that is owned by the CCL. Um, and the contribution that's shown here is, uh, assistance that municipality gives with operating costs of that building?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then for, I, I just wanna, cause some of these, it, it looks like money in, money out, or like, why are we doing the Franco-Nord School Board? So for both the Royal Canadian Legion and the Franco-Nord School Board, those are, um, the snowplow agreements that we have, one legally obligated, uh, and one as a, a kind gesture too. Okay, um, and? And Club Dodge Dora Field is again a municipally-owned, uh, asset on municipally-owned property?
Yeah, this one is actually a little bit different though because the, the, um, Field Golden Ages and the Surin Falls Golden Ages are the recipients of sort of flow-through grants, um, that the, the municipality, um, is in partnership with them. They're, they're grants that, that, the program doesn't exist anymore and it's, the name of the program is escaping me. But, yeah, so they, they submit funding applications every, every year and the municipality, um, contributes a, a portion of, and it's, it's at a capped at an amount that has existed since about twenty, I wanna say twenty-twelve or something like that, you know, but, yeah, yep.
And then the Food Isabel and the West Nippising Food Bank are the two organizations where we, we give financial contributions to help with, uh, their rent.
Sorry.
Anybody, uh, Counselor Gomier?
Madam Mayor, with your questions, I have a few questions. Is there any reason, can we get which is our assets and which we pay rent or is normal? Can we have those details in another column?
Yep, yep.
There a reason why we don't ask them for a financial report at the end of the year? Like, I'm gonna use Monetteville, they use it and the, the, they're able to fundraise forty thousand dollars a year. Why aren't we made aware of it since we're technically paying the tab for, I guess, everything that's in that building? And maybe know what they're doing with their money that they're fundraising? If they're fixing a roof, uh, fixing, uh, war rooms or? I'm just questioning that because it is taxpayers' money, which is, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars, which, if I'm not mistaken, is about one percent taxes.
Right, so the North Monetteville's twenty-nine thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's the heat hydro and so on. We also have a fire hall in, in adjacent, uh, in that building. Um, your point is well-taken. In fact, I've been working with the, uh, with the Counselor from that ward to formulate, or formulate a memorandum of understanding. So some of these things historically, uh, we're just out of sight, out of mind. As long as they're happy and the community's happy, we didn't wanna overburden. They've had a lot of issues with respect to, uh, volunteer burnout and so on and so forth. So now they have a good group of, uh, people and so do we, because we've had some transitional issues as well. So we're working on an MOU with them now, uh, and Counselor Corchane has been, um, instrumental with that. And so that's still on the, you know, so, yes. In the past, we just.
Okay.
Is, is there an expected timeline for an MOU looking?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess and then I'll be wrong, but probably we'll try and get that by early summer and then move forward by then. We're still kind of restructuring and reorganizing at the community level with new hires and so forth. And so our director is, uh, you know, is, is repositioning and assigning certain individuals with certain issues. I take, I took the, uh, the initiative to go, um, right before Christmas because I remember I was, uh, blocked and I couldn't get home. There was that Christmas train in Albin that, uh, blocked me for, uh, ever. But, uh, it'll be passed to one of Steph's, uh, one of Steph's folks and then, you know, be a little, a little bit more clear.
So we, I just wanna make clear, we'll get a financial statement from the organization?
Going forward, if that's council's wish, uh, I think we probably also wanna formalize that as well in terms of, uh, some sort of procedure as well. So, in order, if you're recommending that and it's council's wish, I think we'll have a resolution of formalizing, uh, that part of it and make it part of the policy. It makes it a little easier on us interpersonally with these organizations by not sounding like the, but no, this is our policy, you must, so we'll formalize it.
Yeah, I believe this, Counsel, we had spoken about that at the, in the past in regards to the rental assistance for both the Food Bank and the Food Isabel, and I had spoken to the, the, the Food Bank and that it's no problem with them because they are a charitable organization, file their tax returns, which you, you wanna make sure.
Our Director of Corporate Services has taken note and will be incorporating it into the new policy as well.
Thank you. Um, just one more question on North Monetteville, is the twenty-nine thousand dollars listed, is that, um, um, how do we say it? So we have a fire station there, is that the maintenance for the entire building? So the fire station, but plus the community hall? Or it is, uh, it is split like forty percent, sixty percent, or whatever the square footage is, or?
So that is, that is just, uh, the hall?
Okay.
Um, so it is, we've got the, the utilities broken down and, and, um, you know, as, as Counselor Corchane, um, went through and, and, um, did a lot of negotiating for us with the, the, the CCL, about half of that is actually insurance cost.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments on that? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Corchane?
I just would have a comment. Again, sometimes when we look at the numbers, CCL is getting, you know, a big chunk of that, a hundred thousand. Just would like to put it clear, so CCL actually owns the building. Municipality pays insurance, hydro and the heating. We needed a new roof a little over ten, uh, ten years ago, uh, with the community fundraising, mobilizing, applying for grants, so it, it's, it's a, it's a good partnership because there's a lot of good impacts in the community, so I just wanted to kind of put things out there. Aside from that contribution, there is roughly a fifty thousand dollar operating budget on, on the side. So just for the community center, if we're looking on adding all the operational costs, it's close to eighty thousand, so. Just wanted to make that clear, so.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Move on. And the last item under our general government this evening is our community strategic plan. Um, and, uh, for an overview, I will pass it to Mr. Harville.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, you finally have before you, uh, the community strategic plan. As the memo indicated, about two, three years ago, uh, we came to the previous council with additional funds the government, uh, was providing, so it was a hundred percent funding about doing some reviews and some planning. And so this was one of the, uh, community strat plans that was underway and that was finalized. The reason it's a little late in, uh, very late in getting to you is, um, because it wasn't, uh, originally, when we retained the firm, uh, there were, uh, a lot of issues that were not necessarily gelling with this new council and this new council's term plan and the format was like taking two competing documents and wasn't really actionable. So, um, we were last year working, uh, very closely with council and our communications team to work on putting processes in place to ensure the term plan is being satisfied. Uh, when this was requested, then it fell to the back burner and there, or communications team worked at, uh, cleaning it and massaging it, uh, so that we can move forward. So I think that the intent is to show and just table it at this point. I think that the intent is to use it in addition to our term plan update, which, uh, her worship and I have been, uh, speaking about doing, obviously, twice a year and looking at ensuring that we really have a term plan review, probably within the next, uh, once things settle down in April, probably into May, early June, we'll have a bit of a, uh, kind of a strat planning session and this will form part of it in addition to the term plan update. Uh, I don't know that there's anything more than I can add, unless you wanna add, Madam Mayor.
Um, I, well, I would just say that I did, uh, quickly read through the, uh, the background which really outlines, um, some of the kind of results and input that, uh, was garnered from the community during the consultation sessions. Um, and, uh, when I spoke with the CAO, uh, we both thought if we keep this in our back pocket, uh, the council has, uh, a month or six weeks to review that along with some of our other documents. And, uh, we've been, as, as Mr. Harville said, we've been speaking about, uh, doing, uh, an update to the term plan with a, a strat planning session, uh, similar to what we did at the beginning of the term, uh, sometime in late May or early June. Um, and that will give, uh, staff enough time, um, to kind of gather our thoughts, uh, as they go into budget. Uh, you know, it'll be our second year working on our new timeline and it was a little rushed this year because when you, when you change processes in a big or, organization, I can, you know, cause, uh, cause some speed bumps, but, uh, we're, it's gonna go a lot smoother, um, this year. And with them having that information early, they can, uh, they can account for some of our feedback as they're looking to put the budgets together for next year. Um, so I'll open the floor to questions or comments on this item. Counselor Tessier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. So the plan's in place, now the implementation of the information in here, for example, the, um, work with key community partners to implement technological progress of the community safety while being planned. Um, I believe it's, it, is an implementation phase? Is that still ongoing or is it gonna be a hold till we have our May or early June meeting to determine how to proceed or?
Through you, Madam Mayor, this is an excellent question. You know, nothing is really on hold, we're still conducting business as usual and we're ticking some of the boxes. We're, to be, I hate this term, to, to be honest with you though, or to be forthcoming with you though, I, I'd suggest that we haven't followed this document, uh, to the same, uh, with the same fervor as we've been following the council term plan. Some of it may have some overlap and some of it we've been doing, uh, but I, I'd probably suggest that we wouldn't be taking credit for it. We're probably satisfying some of the boxes by mistake, uh, just by moving forward on some of the wishes that council wishes, uh, wished to follow. So we haven't really implemented this plan, but many of the term plan issues, uh, or term plan directions are, are very similar. Uh, but, uh, to answer your specific question, it is planned to have another, uh, another meeting of that group, uh, and so that we can move things forward, we have a few ideas to, uh, get that group going again.
Okay, will you have this report adopted by council?
I believe we would wanna have it adopted, uh, if it's tabled, it should be adopted at a certain point, yeah.
Would you like that for next meeting or would you like to push it to, uh? May, first May meeting?
I, I, if, I, I'm at, I'm at a loss, we can adopt it. My issue with just adopting it like that without having council have a fulsome discussion, I have no problem if it's been sitting here, uh, waiting until council has a fulsome discussion in your strat planning session, because it may adjust this document. So we may be adopting it with your permission once council has had total input, total consideration in June, once we've had that meeting.
Is council okay if we keep this, uh, and have a more thorough review of it, uh, during a, a strategic planning session? And then it will come back to council for adoption after that session with any changes we may have on that? Mayor? Okay, thank you very much, thank you for providing that. Okay, and, uh, now we'll move on to five point two, which is our planning committee. And for that, I will pass the floor to our Chair, Counselor Tessier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the, um, agenda is proposed regulation of backyard chickens. I'll pass it to Madame Deschamps for an update.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just a brief update, uh, at the first meeting where this was brought forward, uh, council had directed staff to go back and, uh, and provide an, information on how we intended to, uh, carry out public consultation. Uh, in review of what other municipalities have done, they have mostly all commenced their process with a, a general survey, uh, of, um, an online survey or, you know, people are welcome to send emails or, or come in and provide their information in writing, uh, as to their feelings on the matter. Uh, that way, by having an idea of what the general consensus is, that council can then, uh, move forward or not with, uh, uh, a bylaw. So, uh, we've just about finalized the online survey and we're hoping it's gonna go live by the end of the week.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? So we're in agreement to, um, have the survey, uh, put out in April? All in agreement? Yes? Thank you. Back to you, Madam Mayor? Yes, very easy.
Thank you very much, Counselor Tessier. Uh, and that does, that concludes the committee of the whole portion of the meeting. Uh, we'll move into, uh, our regular items, uh, with item six point one.
It is moved by Counselor Restul and seconded by Counselor Tessier. Be it resolved with the consent agenda for the council and committee of the whole meeting held on April the second, two thousand twenty-four, be approved as presented.
Okay. Uh, questions or comments? All in favor? Carried? Yeah? Thank you, Madam. Uh, okay, and the next item, uh, we will move to our new business, uh, six point four point one. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, six point one, how come they're separate? Do we not?
No, there's just the reservation to adopt the consent agenda is missing.
Oh, okay, so we're gonna do the, um, chateau meetings separate?
No, we, we.
Missing from where?
The, we have the general reservation.
Okay.
For the two of you.
Sorry. Okay, so six point four point one, uh, we have a resolution.
It is moved by Counselor Tessier and seconded by Counselor Corchane. Be it resolved with bylaw number two thousand twenty-four twenty-three being a bylaw to license, regulate and govern short-term rental accommodations in the municipality of West Nippising, shall come into force and take effect on the day of his past.
Thank you very much. Uh, so I will open the floor to your questions or comments. Okay, Counselor Corchane?
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor, and I've been getting a lot of phone calls, good conversations, texts, Facebook messages, visible emails, a whole lot of, um, uh, different, uh, different opinions, different information, new information on, um, the proposed bylaw. Um, I think like, if I, if I follow my gut feeling on this, um, I wouldn't be prepared to vote tonight just because, again, like, I don't operate in Airbnb, uh, but I understand that a lot of people in the area do more so than I even thought even a couple of months ago. Um, and I'm thinking because it's something new, it's a new bylaw that we're trying to, to, to put in place, and it is going to have an effect either positive or negative on, on, on people. I think, you know, from the past, uh, council meetings, we all agreed that we needed a, a bylaw in place, so that's not the, the, the issue. I think what, based on the information that I've received personally from residents in my... personally from residents in my, my ward in my area, I wouldn't be comfortable in, in voting on the bylaw tonight. So I would move to defer definitely the discussion to the second meeting in September to allow for one last round of public consultation on the final draft. So I know we've worked kind of hard over the past few months to work out a draft. I think we're all in agreement with the final draft. I would just suggest that we, or, you know, I would move that we defer definitively to the second meeting in September, again, to, to allow just for one last round of public consultation, again, because it is a bylaw that is, it is affecting people in the area and twofold too. You know, I know we're, we're grandfathering any operators that have operated in two thousand twenty-three. I wouldn't change that, but I would, you know, by not delaying, but just pushing back a little bit and giving our residents more time to adjust on what's coming. I think twenty twenty-four could become like a transition year where, you know, we get some feedback, we finalize the bylaw and then we put everything into place. If we do it, you know, by midsummer, and I wasn't aware of that, but if for some reason or another, one person doesn't qualify or doesn't have a license and already has a half summer full of bookings, that person is actually liable for fifty percent of the, of the fees. So like it, it, it is, you know, I wasn't aware of that even about a month ago. But again, that's based on the information I received, I would move to defer.
So I will just put a, you have a resolution on the floor with the motion to defer to the second meeting in September. This year I do need a secondaire on that motion, Counselor Tessier. And at this point, if anybody has anything to offer specifically on the motion to defer, I would ask for comments only on that motion until we resolve that. So any further comments or questions on the motion to defer? Counselor Pellerin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too received quite a few emails, phone calls, different point of view. People come up with different spell days. They have different way of doing things. I'd like to see a few things change in our bylaw for sure. So I fully support Counsel Corchain. I'm glad he brought it up more eloquently than me. So I do support this motion for sure.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Restool?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just so I'm clear, we're talking about deferring the decision on this bylaw until September because it was mentioned about more community consultations. And from my own perspective, I don't think we need more community consultations. I think we've done enough. I think we have this in front of us. We had a subcommittee who took all of the comments that were made and brought this draft. And we've spoken about it. We've gotten to this point. We took the, the majority of a meeting to go through every single point and have our own discussions on it, our own opportunities to contribute. So okay, if we're going for, I just want a clarification about the additional consultations because this has been going on since, what, two thousand twenty-one? We're going on three years on this. I think it's time we got to start moving forward and accepting.
Excuse me? There's no comments from, there's no comments permitted from the.
So that's, I just want to clarify.
So the intent of your referral is, is to have more public consultations?
Yes, just one last.
Counselor Gony?
I agree with Counsel Restool's comment. We did have consultation, online consultation. We took the feedbacks. We had an open forum here in the council chambers. I think we've kicked the bucket enough times. People had a chance to say their comments, to call their counselors a lot of times. I think it's time to move forward, put regulations in place. It's not in stone. We can change them. There's anything major, it can come back, we can adjust it. But I think it's time to move forward and to put this by law in place. Thank you.
Counselor Pellerin?
Just when we did the consultation, not a lot of people were aware of it. I don't think it was advertised enough because as we can see, like there's been a petition going on from six, seven hundred people compared to fifty-nine when we started. So I'm not here for one way or another. I'm here, I'm hearing a lot of people concerned either on one side or the other. So there's definitely some things I'd like to change in our bylaw. So that's why it's okay if we pass it. It's, you say it's easy. We can remove some things, but it's a lot easier, harder to remove things after we've done it. I don't see the, the rush is going, going into it. That, that's my comment.
Thank you very much. Counselor Tessier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For me, with a new brand new bylaw like this and a short term, I don't know the business. And the more I hear from people, there's new information that come up, just like Counsel Corchain mentioned about if it was to pass now, they could lose money through the summer. There's other bylaws that also that we may not have looked at that could apply in certain ways. There's, are things that after thinking and reviewing things that I would like to review and discuss and possibly change. So the, the final draft to me, when it's ready to pass, I think should have another consultation to make sure we captured everything that need to be considered.
Okay. Now everybody is open. That's great. I will put the, the motion to defer to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to defer? Three, all opposed? Four, motion to defer is defeated. Okay, so we're, we're back to the original motion to adopt the bylaw. Questions or comments? Counselor?
Would I please be, can I request an recording on the matter?
Pardon me?
Could I just request a?
On the resolution to adopt the bylaw? Okay, yes. Uh, yeah, please.
It is moved by Counsel Tessier and seconded by Counsel Corchain. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty-four twenty-three being a bylaw to license, regulate and govern short-term rental accommodations in the West Nipissing municipality shall come into force and take effect on the day of his past. Counselor Corchain?
I'm sorry. Were there any questions or comments on the actual motion before we proceed to vote? Okay. Counselor Corchain?
Counselor Corchain? Thank?
No.
Counselor Gony? Counselor Nichol?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Pellerin?
No.
Counselor Restool?
Yes.
Counsel Rivard?
I am.
Oh, sorry. Counsel Tessier?
No. Marishon?
Yes.
Passed. It's adopted.
Thank you. With that, the, the bylaw is adopted and we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Item six point four point two, the award for the official.
It is moved by Counsel Gony and seconded by Counsel Rivard. Whereas requests for proposal for an official plan review and zoning bylaw amendment were opened on March the seventh by the Director of Corporate Services and the Municipal Clerk. And whereas four valid proposals were received and whereas the proposals have been reviewed and the award being recommended herein consists of the best prices meeting all specifications, and whereas council concurs with the recommendations received, be it resolved, the request for proposal for the official plan review and zoning bylaw amendment be awarded to Planscape S G L, having submitted a proposal of ninety-five thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars meeting all specifications.
Okay. Questions or comments on that item? Okay, has, I, I do have one question. Has Planscape done previous projects with us before?
Yes.
They were the ones that did the housing strategy. Is that correct?
No.
They did the prior official plan?
Okay.
Oh, no, sorry. No, no, they've worked with us since that time. Yes, sorry.
Existing bylaws.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Counsel Rivard and seconded by Counsel Gony. Be it resolved that the remuneration and expense report for two thousand twenty-three be received.
Okay, so there is a memo and these are mandatory reports that are released every year and it's both council compensation as well as compensation from various boards and committees for the municipality. Question, do we, is there a resolution received? Questions or comments on the, on those reports before we approve? Okay, all in favor? Carrie? Okay, and next we have a notice of motion that's been submitted.
It is moved by Counsel Gony and moved by Counsel Pellerin and seconded by Counsel Rivard. Whereas at a meeting held on February the twentieth, twenty twenty-four, council passed a resolution number twenty twenty-four thirty-six approving the twenty twenty-four municipal expenditures. And whereas Counselor Pellerin has submitted a notice of motion requesting reconsideration of resolution number twenty twenty-four thirty-six to reduce the twenty twenty-four municipal expenditure estimates from the proposed four point six seven percent to two point six seven percent. Be it resolved that council supports Counselor Pellerin's notice of motion to reconsider the twenty twenty-four municipal expenditures.
Staff want to speak to that at all or questions?
Unless you want some procedural advice, I think you're aware of it.
Yeah, so this is a motion to reconsider. So as per the procedural bylaw, in order to pass, it does need a two-thirds majority. This is a motion to reconsider the motion that has been accepted only, not necessarily to say, yes, we want to go from two six seven to, or four six seven to two six seven, only to bring it back to the next meeting to discuss whether or not we would reconsider the final tax rate. And so like the, the discussion now is just whether council is in favor of reconsidering, given the information provided by Counselor Pellerin. Excuse me? You can speak, but it needs to be in the hallway.
Well, we're done anyway.
Is there a point in time where we could get up and address this situation?
No.
Like this meeting started great. They were talking about the community, the municipality. This is what we're all about. We're.
Okay, but then we don't, that's not the way that council works. We have procedures.
Young man, that we're born and raised here and our dream was to have a home on the lake, Lake Nipissing. That's the, our, our entire way that we can afford it. But the interest rate going up.
Okay, I, I understand that, but then this is not, we had a public.
A little MFO.
We had a public.
So, so when you guys.
When there's about eight hundreds fifty petition within.
You guys took a petition of what, fifty-seven?
We could have two thousand, three thousand petition in two minutes.
I've got eight hundred and fifty signatures.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
What, you're gonna call the police? I got eight hundred and fifty signatures in six days.
To do lots of work for the next election.
Six days. I got fifth, eight hundred and fifty signatures. Six days.
We're not meeting the respectful.
Well, no, but I mean, this isn't, there was a public consultation.
Yes, it's the biggest, yeah, exactly. Like you said, it's the biggest petitions in, in the entire West Nipissing history that I started.
It's our community. Our population doubles here in the summertime and this is really going to affect West Nipissing half, half monthly.
Okay, we're, we're not debating this. Like the resolution has now been passed and you can stay for the rest of the meeting, but we have council business to get out.
I just thought there was a point in time where I can come up and address you guys. Pretty well put together on this.
These three here are, us three are single. He's got a wife. That's the only way we can pay for our homes. So the interest rate.
Okay. You need to conduct yourself according to what our, our policies are here, which is like there, there is no speaking in the gallery. So you can, you can stay here, you can leave, but I need to be able to continue the meeting.
Scary thing, it's gonna be on the news tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay. So this is the motion to reconsider for the. Who checked it?
You just, you just, I'm just.
Yeah, both ways, sport. Uh, motion to reconsider. And. Mr. Barbo. Any questions or comments on the motion to reconsider? Do you want to speak to it at all, Counsel Pellerin?
Sure, it's, at all, it's, it's obvious.
Oh, I'm sorry. Because we're not debating like whether, like, it's just whether or not council wants to reconsider. So, but, yeah. But so don't get into the nuts and bolts of why, because that would come back, you know.
I'm not sure what I'm.
Yeah, I know.
So like if you would like to, if you might actually maybe help explain this, if you would like to present your point as to why maybe we would want to reconsider a certain bylaw or a certain decision that was made at council.
Well, necessarily, Tom, why the?
The whole point is.
C'est ça. Alors, le point que tu fais, conseiller, c'est que tu fais, tu as un argument pour le considérer. Il y a une décision qui a été faite au conseil et la loi exige que il y a besoin du tiers du conseil pour décider qu'il vaut de le considérer. Si il y a moins six personnes qui disent oui, la motion est déplacée. Also, six personnes qui n'ont pas. At this point, you can see your resolution pour changer le tout. And that's just the law. So, so when you've had a motion to reconsider, when a motion was passed and you're a prevailing member, so you can bring it back with, hey, based on new information, so everything you've done is right, but you need six, five more people in addition to you to agree to talk about it. If not, it's, it's not even considered. Okay?
Ben, okay, mais là, je peux te donner comme les raisons pourquoi je voudrais le reconsidérer?
Just pour le considérer, si c'est un débat du budget ou de rouvrir la discussion du budget en plus de ça, that would have to wait.
Okay, parce que le budget est fine, mais le budget a changé, le budget va changer quand on a eu les nouvelles solutions. C'est ça mon point, c'est pour ça que je l'admet.
Puis ton point était fait.
Oui, c'est ce que je veux parler.
But.
Let him, yes. But the, the issue is to discuss how you're going to rebudget or do whatever. The idea right now is that you, you put a notice of motion indicating that one of our capital projects is a million dollars less. Therefore, let's move it, you know, let's drop it two percent. So that's fairly clear in, in why you're asking for a reconsideration. Right? So then if, then if the reconsideration is given, then you would give all your other reasons on what you would like to amend and why. And then the rest of council could agree with you or disagree with you. But you need six people to discuss it.
Understand? So in order for it to come back for discussion, we need six people now on this particular resolution. Understood? Okay. Pardon? Okay, so motions on the floor. Any other questions or comments before we, Counsel Rivard?
I would just, just on the basis of reconsidering, reconsidering things this quickly, something that was maybe just then, a couple of months ago, similar to maybe this other contested bylaw that we just, that was just approved here. It would, it would get long if council would continuously bring things back, say, a month or two after. So that's just why I would, I don't think I'd be in favor of bringing it up for reconsideration.
Counsel Tessier?
A motion to reconsider must be passed by chief or as a member present. Discussion of motion of which then shall not be discussed on the main question. Discussion of motion of request then shall not be discussed on the main question permitted. So do we still have a decision before we vote to reconsider?
No, that, what that means is there's no discussion now on that question. It's a reconsideration and then the discussion happens. So you have to talk about whether you wish to reconsider and there's no discussion on the main motion unless, that's, that's what it is.
I understand.
Okay, so motion for reconsideration? Any other? Okay, all in favor of the reconsideration as per the, uh, notice of motion? Two. Okay, and that's the last official item for the meeting of this evening. I will just, uh, give, uh, a brief, uh, mayor's report. First of all, I'd like to, uh, welcome, uh, Council Nichol, uh, back to the big screen with us, uh, this evening. Um, she has planned to maybe join us in person in the next meeting or for sure the meeting after that. But on behalf of all the council, again, that can congratulate you and your family on, uh, on the arrival of, uh, Chloe and, uh, you're looking great and we're looking forward to her first visit. On an update, uh, that I've received from, uh, Council Restool on the, um, uh, a few items with DSA. Um, uh, first is that we have received, uh, and this was from their last meeting, uh, word that the, uh, there had been expanded services for homelessness outreach by the, uh, DSA service provider True Self, uh, to two days a week. And that has been confirmed to continue, uh, through the summer months. Uh, so they will continue to serve the community uh, here in that capacity. And the other new, news on the DSA front, um, is that, let's look for the correct wording. Uh, the matter for the additional boards did go to the DSA board, uh, at their last meeting. Um, and, uh, DSA has approved a resolution. Uh, and I will get the exact, uh, whereas a letter of support from Chair Mark King, November 23rd, requesting proportionate representation uh, based on, uh, population growth. And whereas, uh, the meetings that we have with Minister Parson and the municipality of West Nipissing at the Roma Conference have recommended that West Nipissing, that DSA provide a resolution. Therefore, be it resolved that this resolution supports consideration by the minister to change the DSA act. So, uh, DSA has, uh, has supported our request and, and, uh, our efforts uh, to get more proportional representation on that board. Uh, it is still a process because the board makeup is, uh, governed by provincial legislation. So those changes do have to be made, uh, at the ministry level. Um, but, uh, uh, both myself as mayor and Jamie as, uh, both Deputy Mayor and our representative on DSA uh, will continue to follow up, uh, both with the ministry, uh, and with our partners at DSA uh, to, to work through the next steps of the process. So I thought those were, uh, very, very good news and, uh, some, some results of the work that we do, uh, when we go to advocate on behalf of the municipality uh, at, uh, at conferences and meet with ministers. Um, and with that, uh, I will, uh, move to our con- confirmatory bylaws.
It is moved by Council Rivard and seconded by Council Gagne. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202424 being a bylaw of the West Nipissing municipality to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held on April 2nd, 2024 shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay, all those in favor? Carried?
It is moved by Council Gagne and seconded by Council Rivard. Be it resolved that the meeting of council held on April 2nd, 2024 be adjourned.
Okay, all those in favor? Carried. Thank you very much.